It's 7:00 PM, so I'll go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board Meeting for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024 to order. Before we begin, everyone introduce themselves, starting on my right, please.
Skip Severance.
Joyce Abaskam.
Edward Veal.
Drew Stevens.
Doug Cummings.
Larry Higginson, SRPC.
And Mr. Evans had emailed indicating he would not be able to attend tonight. And at the moment, Mr. Moran, the ex-official rep for the Select Board is not here, and Mr. Davies, our alternate, is not here, so.
He's not our alternate.
He's not our alternate anymore, so. Apologize, I missed that piece. So any votes tonight at the moment will be a total count of five. That's just for minutes. So we have three cases on the agenda, or three public hearings. I'm going to take one slightly out of order in case anybody is here for that one. It is case number 24-011 SUB York 206 Mill Pond Road. There was, it was originally continued tonight, but the applicant submitted a request today due to a conflict. They requested that they be continued to October 23rd at 7:00 PM. Is there any discussion on that by the board?
No.
I move that we accept the applicant's request to continue case 24-011 SUB York to Wednesday, October 23rd at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that motion.
That's a motion by Mrs. Abaskam, and a second by Mr. Stevens to continue. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. So if anybody was here for that, we won't be able to talk about that one, that case tonight. As a public hearing, it'll be on two weeks from now. So we'll go back to the regular order of the agenda. Case 22-011 SUB Moore's Road. This is kind of more of a procedural item, so we did have a butters re-notified just because of the timeline on it. But this is more of a procedural item where there was a conditional approval granted in January of '23. Normally, conditional approvals have a 12-month time limit. It wasn't specified in the notice of decision, so it was kind of the interpretation of the board or of council that unless there was anything substantive that's changed in between when that case was heard and now, that this is more of a procedural housekeeping kind of thing and up to the board. So we did have it. The applicant did submit a request for retroactive extension, and we did re-notice it for that reason. But that is why that's on here tonight. So, Mr. Haney, I believe all deliverables have since been, all conditions have been, since been met. All deliverables have been provided. I think the last thing that was really outstanding that was delayed was the HOA covenants and deed items that had to go through Town Council for review. And that's gone through, and I believe everything has been, I guess, accepted from council as to, for that. So, Mr. Guyer, you're here on behalf of Jones Beach and the applicant, I believe. I think I tasked you with just going back and making, to confirm that with this extension request, that any changes that had occurred were not, would not have any substantive effect on this application the way it was, was put through.
Correct, yeah. We went back through and reviewed the changes that the board had made to the zoning and subdivision regulations since we obtained approval. And there's nothing that would impact. I think the only two substantive changes were the no disturbance area, 25-foot no disturbance for wetland, and then the driveway issue. And we meet both of those criteria already. So, yeah, I think we, as you said, we have submitted all the conditions of approval. All the bounds have been set. We have been working to meet all those conditions of approval, states of the wetlands, fishing game. So all of that has been taken care of. We spent, the client spent a lot of money to put in the bounds and everything. So we're hoping to get extension so we can finish this up.
Yeah, so there's, is there anything, there's anything remaining outstanding, or all the items have, yeah. I was going to say, my understanding was, yeah, all the conditions have been, been met, so. So bring it back to the board, but basically, the actions we're probably looking for tonight would be a motion regarding the extension. And if that is provided, approved, then, then the next item would be, you know, signing, signing plans and milers. Well, when they're provided, I believe they are here. I believe we do have the milers? Yeah, okay, that's okay. We usually do it at the end of the night, but, but they have been reviewed, so. So bring it back to the board for, for discussion or motion.
Is there a suggested date to extend it to, or, I mean, is it like another year, or?
No, no, because it was just the conditional approval that we're acting on. So, so all the conditions have been, have been met. So it would be, yeah.
So this is?
Extending it from the January 25th, so it was really January 25th, '24, was really when conditions should have been met. So it would be extending it to potentially tonight, or I'd probably go a week out, just to allow them to get stuff through the registry and everything else.
Okay.
There's no other deliverable work.
Waiting for or anything.
Right.
So everything is complete. This is just a formality to reflect the one-year timeframe from '23 to January '24, and now we're in October.
Yeah. And some of this delay, the last probably month and a half to two months, is us going to council for an opinion. So the applicant had provided stuff. We had our council's approval of the HOA documents in August, late August, but had requested confirmation about the, how to handle the potential extension or conditional, of the conditional approval. And we just got that a couple of weeks ago, which then had to be passed on to the applicant to get the butter notifications and all that through. So that's why the additional kind of two months is here.
So they were eight months late letting us know they needed an extension. And so we're just today, ten months later total, saying that we approve the extension for the deliverables.
And the completion of the application?
The application was complete, so that is nothing. It's just that, it's just that it would be potentially just a motion on, to allow a retroactive extension of the conditional approval.
Okay, just needed to know what we were doing.
Yes. Do you know the words? Because I don't.
It just said, allow retroactive extension.
Of the conditional approval.
Of the conditional approval.
Is what we're discussing at the moment, yep.
Approval. Sorry, I speak this out loud. The conditional. Say it again.
Approval. Approval.
Retroactive approval of the conditional approval?
Retroactive extension.
Extension.
So basically, this is one of those items that we took away, because this isn't the first time this has occurred in recent memory. So this is part of what we talked about is during our joint meeting of having kind of like a checklist for this board, kind of applicants, and then for the town, like to go through as it shifts departments and things like that, to try to help. It's not trying to create more work. It's trying to say, okay, this is, so we keep everything in line for everybody. So, you know, specifying this in our notice of, of decision is, is going to be helpful, which we'll try to create a, like a standard set of conditions, which would have that in there, and that could be printed right on all our notices of decision. So that again, it puts that timeline right up front and center on, on everything for everybody.
And you said that this project originally did not have the date listed with the conditional?
We didn't, it was never specified on the notice of decision, though.
It is within the?
It's in the regs, so technically, technically it's on the applicant to, to follow that and to be aware, just like all the other items in the subdivision regs, unless a waiver is requested. But council's opinion, or one of their recommendations was, yes, you know, in the future, start putting those on the NODs.
So before I entertain or speak the motion for you, just a quick question. Do we need to then look at, once the dates are on there, if somebody misses it, what we, what our action going forward is, or?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I move that we allow the retroactive extension of the conditional approval for case number 22-011 from the approval date of 1/25/23 to 10/16/24, as the applicant has requested.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
So it's a motion by Mrs. Abaskam, a second by Mr. Severance. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? So that motion carries 5-0 as well.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Guyer, what we'll probably do is we'll get those signed before the end of the night, before we leave. So they'd be, they'd be picked up probably on Friday. Was that, is that?
Yeah.
I know you're local, so. Is that okay? We'll be able to get them before the end of the night. Perfect. All right. Thank, thank you, everybody. So next item is case 23, I'm sorry, case 24-014 SUB 12-Month LLC 104 Stevens Hill Road. It's an application for Northham Survey LLC on behalf of 12-Month LLC, requesting a two-lot conventional subdivision along with a lot line adjustment. The property is located at 104 Stevens Hill Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as Tax Map 46 Lot 6. And Stevens Hill Road is a scenic town road. This is the initial public hearing for this, this application. So for anybody here, cases are taken, we have the initial review of the application for completeness. If the application is accepted as complete, then we can open up to public hearing and, and move on from there. So do we have anybody for the applicant? If you can, if you can just give us an overview of the, the project, and, and we'll go from there, please.
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Board. My name's Eric Solovich. I'm with Northham Survey out of Dover, New Hampshire. Here with me tonight is James and Isabel Quimby of 94 Stevens Hill Road, right back there, and Joe Felzone with 12-Month LLC, owner of 104 Stevens Hill Road, Nottingham, also known as Tax Map 46 Lot 6. The parcel exists as a 96-acre tract with 862 feet of frontage along Stevens Hill Road, as mentioned. That's a scenic road. The parcel is zoned residential and agriculture with the natural requirements listed under Note 5 on the survey. The parcel is not in a flood zone, perfume-affirmed map dated May 17th, 2005. Field survey was completed by my office in July of 2024. Mapping data shown here on is on horizontal datum, NAD 83, New Hampshire State plane coordinates per static GPS observations. Contour information shown is on North American vertical datum, 1988, with a two-foot contouring. The wetlands and hydroic soils were delineated by James Gove, certified wetland scientist, 51, with his notation and stamps on the plan. The parcel is primarily bounded by stone wall, with a southeasterly boundary line being the threat of Back Creek. Historically, this parcel was known as the Duke Hill pasture. This is kind of a little side story that I think is fun to share with the board. And that dates back to the original lotting plan for Nottingham, 1732. And I brought a copy of that plodding, that lotting plan, if anyone's interested in looking at it, because I think it's kind of neat. If you guys are on the planning board, you might like to see that. If you want to check that out, it highlighted a lot that we're kind of talking about here. It's just kind of a neat little piece of history. Moving on to the proposed project, the boundary line adjustment and subdivision plan. The boundary line adjustment being the more straightforward aspect. We're proposing to transfer 70 acres of the back land to Tax Map 46 Lot 4-8, which is owned by the Quimby's at 94 Stevens Hill Road, by abandoning the two mutual boundary lines. Those are shown on Sheet 2 of the subdivision plan set. If you're interested in seeing that, you see how the proposed lot, the proposed lot line for Lot B kind of comes, jogs a 90-degree angle, comes straight down, and then you have a 416-foot line and a 271-foot line. Those would be the lines that would be abandoned to complete the boundary line adjustment. Is there any questions on that?
Oh, you said Sheet 2.
Sheet 2.
Sheet 2 of the subdivision plan.
Yeah.
Subdivision.
Second to last page.
So non-existing conditions.
So you can see the Quimby's, a butter tag labeled there on Sheet 2, kind of on the left-hand side on the bottom, and the mutual boundary line being the stone wall there. So that's where the parcels will connect. With the remaining 26 acres, we're proposing a two-lot subdivision. Due to the size of the parcel, the topography and delineation was limited to the front portion of the parcel. The existing parcel, which is labeled as Proposed Lot A, is to be 15 acres in size with 637 feet of frontage. There's no proposed development with the lot as it exists with the house, a well, and leach field. We did dig test pits with those shown on the survey, and test pits were dug by Gove Environmental August 14th, 2024. A copy of that report has been submitted with the application. I do have an extra copy of it, if we don't have that. Proposed Lot B is to be 11 acres in size with 231 feet of frontage. Parcel has over 2 acres of contiguous upland, passing test pits, proposed well with 75-foot radius, and a Conservation Commission approval for the driveway location, which is a requirement for the scenic road boundary. With both lots being over 5 acres in size, NHDES approval is not required. And moving on to reviewing the staff comments, there were, there were two primary comments here. They had it in front of me a minute ago. It was pretty poor. But number one, talking about the existing wells in the 75-foot radius, so the 75-foot radius in the existing lot with the existing well does extend onto Proposed Lot B. This does not require an easement in my eyes, as it's not more than 20 feet onto Proposed Lot B. This area of the lot is already protected with Nottingham's 20-foot septic setback, therefore will not require an easement. There are no adverse effects to the property. Number two, this is correct. There was, there was a comment on number two. Where did that go? Hold on, I just had that reported. I like to read the comments before I do it. Oh, here we are. So it says Sheet 2 of 3 of the subdivision set has a label on the plan that states the limit of topographic survey. See Note 14, and then Note 14 says "See Sheet 3 for topographic information." So that is labeled correctly on the existing conditions plan set. We did notice on the subdivision plan set that it's labeled incorrectly because we added the Nottingham impact C note. So we are, we did update the plans. I have an updated copy with me, but we basically moved Note 14 to Note 18, and then added "See Sheet 3 for topographic information" for Note 14. That's tracking. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So essentially, why that tag was there was because it's on an overview for the subdivision, and it says limited topographic survey, but we weren't showing topography in the front portion of the lot. So it was just directing you to look at Sheet 3 for the contours. We are asking for a few waivers in part of this application. The first waiver being from Article 8.3.6 for existing grades and topographic contours on the entire subject parcel. As dated previously, this is a 96-acre parcel, so we did limit our topographic survey to the developable portion of the lot upping the, along Stevens Hill Road. And with the remaining land and everything out behind the wetland, there's, there's no proposed changes at this time. Waiver number two talks about, from Article 8.3.9 for natural features including wetlands on the entire parcel. Similar to the above waiver, we limited the delineation to just the developable portion of the subdivision. So we feel that that's adequate to show the new lot and the new lot sizing and setbacks. To, I guess if there's any questions on that before I go on to the next thing, you'll?
No, I think, I think, especially right now, can you, the overview, just, and then we'll, we'll, we'll discuss the application completeness, yeah.
Okay. I guess we'll move on for, I'm good with the overview.
Sure, okay. I appreciate that, thank you. And Mr. Mr. Haney, you've had a chance, I know you've had a chance to review the application, and as, as, as we had a chance to review it, with what's been submitted, do you feel like the application is sufficient to be considered complete?
Yeah, as I said, the memo, the all information that's been addressed, I mean, there's a couple of comments that have been addressed, discussion or, like, condition. So I think at this point, I'm going to keep the, the application and, and begin consideration.
Okay. So that brings it back to the board. So at this point, a motion regarding whether or not we accept the application as complete would be in order.
I move that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second.
Second, the motion by Mrs. Abaskam, a second by Mr. Severance to accept the application as complete. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. All right, a point of order at this point. So we were notified very late today by a butters that they did not receive notification, the legal notification. So we're in a kind of gray area. Tried to look up the regulations, the RSA on it, and then our own regulations issue a butter notification. And I believe it's a butters that, there's a number that are directly across the street from this project. And then, do you remember, was that where they all just directly across the street, or were they, do you remember that email?
I think there are a few others, but I think it was late tonight after the search.
So I think in the interest of, of everybody's time, is that for tonight, I think we can continue to discuss with the applicant. We can open the public hearing, but I would suggest that we hold off on any motions on waivers or any final action tonight to make sure that any missed butters get duly notified. I think it's in the best interest of the board and for the applicant, just to avoid, you know, getting grounds for appeal for something that's potentially a technicality.
Yeah, we listed a butters for the Nottingham tax cards, and I believe the subdivision across the street is so new that that information is not available.
Right. That subdivision unfortunately is, was done by the applicant, so it's, it's hard to, it would be hard to say that it was potentially not known. So again, I'm not looking to add delays to anything, and I don't think there was anything done intentional, but where it's been brought to our attention that there's individuals that were, were missed that
Aren't able to make it.
Would want to be here, potentially want to be able to be here tonight to speak or provide input. I think it's cleaner to continue, and if we can get a list of those and get that notification out, it's 10 days, so we would potentially be able to continue this to the next meeting, because that's 14 days out, so we'd be able to get them, unless Alana tells me that's, that timeframe doesn't work. We'd be able to do that. Is that timeline, okay. So I think that, and again, I'll bring it back to the board, you know, the board, we can discuss that, but the, the items in our regulations, subdivision 7.3.1, number 2, 8.2, number 2, which we act on completeness. But again, I don't think we could have even discussed this part of it without, without doing so. So it's really 7.3.1, number 2, and specifically the RSA about a butter notification, 676.41, lowercase e, number 2, is what guides us on a butter notice. So, so we'll bring it back to the board, bring it back to the applicant. Is there anything beyond the overview that, that you gave us that, that you want to, that you want to add to that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess one point of discussion is for the subdivision regulations, we require, or Nottingham requires granite bounds at all lot corners and every 300 feet along the lot line.
Yep.
With the size of these parcels and the length of these lot lines, we're going to bring it for the board to discuss putting granite bounds at the corners and then using iron rods along the lines. Not only is that a cost savings for the applicant, but it also makes our life easier.
Sure.
Because lugging granite bounds out into the back 40 of 15-acre and 11-acre lot is a significant amount of work.
Yeah, and I believe that, we've had that request before in similar situations, and I believe, you know, waivers were requested for that, for that. So again, granite bounds at the corner specifically, but every 300 feet or so, it's, it's, the iron pins were set on other, on other lots. So that would be a waiver request, yeah.
Okay. And then I guess it goes back to the discussion about the existing well. So the existing well does encroach onto Proposed Lot B, but it, it doesn't encroach more than 20 feet. In my eyes, that still protects the well, and still, under Section 19.3, leaves the freedom for Lot B to put their septic system wherever they're allowed to put their septic system. There's a series of, I had it up in front of me earlier today, but there's 19.33 A, B, C, D, and with the placement of this well and the placement of the lot line, we meet all of those. There's no hindrance to that lot at all. Would the board be accepting of that, or would you want me to file a formal waiver for that as well?
18.3, you're close. So I think the way that has been done in the past is to show that you could put a well within
Okay.
The lot. So you may, we've had that happen on others, I believe, from memory, and the board can discuss that as well, but where an existing lot, as long as it's, for the well placement, could be placed fully on the, on the existing parcel.
If it had to be rebuilt, then they can move it.
I believe that has, has been utilized. So again, without, without a waiver, it's, I believe it's been done that way.
Okay.
But the other way is doing it as is, and then potentially asking for a waiver of that, probably with the reasoning that it's already there, and there is, but in the future, if that need to be moved, there would be alternate placement that would satisfy it.
Okay. Makes sense. And I did have that typed out, maybe, so.
Does the board have any questions on that? So 18.3 specifies well radius placement, and very specifically, it's number one, each?
But the well doesn't encroach on that property.
Number two, I'm sorry.
The lot line that they produced encroaches on the well.
Correct.
So. I'm just saying.
Right, but we're not over the 20-foot septic setback, so it doesn't
Yep.
Have adverse effects to that lot.
Yeah, that's a different question. I mean, the lot line could be moved.
18.3.
I'm just, I'm just saying that the, the well is already there.
Correct.
Encroaching on anything. It was already there.
Sorry, it is 19.3, and I must have an older version. So bring it back to the board for other discussion on the, on the items. So we had the items from staff's report, Mr. Haney's report, which, Blair, could you read those off again? The, the, any of the items that were in your report is for us to have discussion. For some reason, I just don't have the.
Well, with the easement, or does it require the, the, the existing home and the new lot? And then there is the note on, there's a label on the plan that states, it's on Sheet 2 of 3, the subdivision plan, and it says, "Limit of topographic survey, see Note 14." It basically stopped doing their survey, and there is, but that particular plan doesn't show on, directly back to the, Sheet 14 talking about the topographic information. However, that one just redirects you, they're going to have to change one of those. You said, you had, totally resolution-wise, but I, it was hard for me to follow.
There's a lot of Note 14, and Note 3, and Sheet 3. Yeah, so essentially, I think that, I could probably just strike that note from the plan. It's not super critical. But the, the purpose of it is, is because the sheet that we're discussing, and I'll go to the existing conditions plan set, because it's a little easier to follow, because the notes are on the same page. Sheet 1 of the existing conditions set shows the limit of topographic surveys, sees, see Note 14, and then Note 14 says, "See Sheet 3 for topographic information." So it's just directing the reader that the topographic information is shown on Sheet 3, but it's a little, it's a little redundant. I don't think it really needs to be there, but that's.
Topographic information is typically on a plan that is recorded. So he's, this is the recorded one, or would be, and they're just trying to tell you that that information is available up to this point of, of this limitation, but you've got to go to a different plan to see it. Is what that's essentially doing. You're probably, you're probably not doing it.
Yeah.
Probably just remove it, but if you're going to do that, you may as well just fix it. it.
Yeah. And, and a couple more questions. Um, so on sheet two of three of the subdivision plan, you do specify that the, the new lot sizing, so the, the 30,000 square, that's, that's within the setbacks, but, um, that's, that's
Great.
That's perfect.
Yep.
And then, um, and you might have pointed this out already, and I apologize if, if it's redundant, the lot sizing, because it looks like obviously the back half of, of both the existing lot and the proposed, the way the proposed lots are, you know, you have a very large section of wetlands. Um, are you proposing the 11 acres and 15 acres mostly for, is it for current use, uh, option, or is it, is there another reason?
It's mainly for current use, and, uh, I was approached by the Conservation Commission. I was unaware that that is a major critical wetland of the highest degree. I don't know if it's with the state or the feds, and I am working with them to, uh, place an easement, another layer of an easement, um, that's why Sam is here tonight, and give them a, a lock-in access down there to do inspections, make sure no one's dumping anything in there in the future. But that will come later and doesn't affect anything because it's already protected. This new easement is just gonna make sure it's protected. My name is looking at butters, just so you know.
All right, is there any questions from the board? Otherwise, there is a public hearing, so like I said, I think in the interest of everybody, anybody that's here for us, I think it's, um, you know, would be pertinent to go ahead and open the public hearing side of it to a lot of people that, that might have came, coming for this, uh, meeting to be able to, to speak. So, so
I have a question, if I may.
Of course.
Um, if I understand this correctly, we're only building two houses, right?
Correct.
On all this land.
One house.
And there's, is that?
Oh, we're
Yeah, there's one, there's one existing.
One, the other one's existing, correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Alternate house location, what's that all about?
Alternate house location.
That's right. Building envelope, this is sheet two of two.
I'm just looking at mine.
It's the wrong one.
Are you on the different Stevens Hill?
Yes, I guess I am, never mind.
Okay, I'll say, we only show one house, but
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'll go ahead and, um, open the public hearings, uh, the public hearing remains open even if we continue, but, uh, I'll go ahead and, um, ask anybody that would like to speak in support of the application to come up first, uh, anybody that's, uh, against or neutral to come up after, but please come up to the, uh, the front desk, you know, state your name and address, and then, um, director, please direct all, uh, comments and questions to the, to the board, so.
You guys can have a seat.
Yeah, if you'd mind taking a step back out, please.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to speak, uh, either, there's nobody running up, so for, against, or just as general questions about this, um, this application? Public hearing was opened at 7:31.
Looks like you can close at 7:31.
Give it one more second. All right, we'll, uh, close the public hearing, it's, we'll say 7:32. All right, we'll bring it back, back up to the, to the board. Um,
You guys can come in.
What I was looking to find specifically, and, and not to throw another wrench into anything, but I know we do have certain wetland areas in town that are considered our, they're not called prime wetlands, which is a state, uh, term. We have critical wetlands, uh, and they have additional protections. So I just want to make sure that, that this, that whatever's being proposed, uh, adheres to, to that as well. Um, I know the Conservation Commission did have a chance to, I think, sitwalk with you and, uh, review the, the plan in, in advance, which was at the applicant's, um, you know, the applicant was, had sought that out and, and had that done for this.
They, they also had someone from a, uh, state agency there.
So the critical wetlands, it's, it's got its own, it's in the, so we do have a wetland conservation area in the, in the zoning ordinance, and that specifically, critical wetlands, the way it reads, "Critical wetlands are those areas identified in the wetlands map of the Nottingham Natural Resource Inventory. Uh, uh, actual determination of critical wetland boundaries will be determined by on-site delineation of wetlands according to the standards of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Wetlands Bureau Administrative Rules by New Hampshire Certified Wetland Scientists. There should be no development in the critical wetland or the 100-foot buffer to the critical wetland. All structures will be set back 100 feet from the critical wetland boundary, um, and they're not eligible for a conditional use permit, so." I don't know, I'd have to go look at the map and see if these, if this is considered, if this was flagged as one of the, um, critical ones. Do you have that up on the computer page yet? Yeah.
This wetland is a critical wetland, and it do show the 100-foot hybrid soil buffer line.
Okay.
Critical wetland, we work with, go with environmental
I apologize if I missed that, that was a, so, in that, so the 100-foot is not, anything beyond the 100-foot is not considered within your buildable area?
Yep.
Appreciate that, thank you.
No problem.
So I could have, could have, so that's the reason for that, that 100-foot versus the, uh, the normal, um, the normal distance of, you know, 50 or 75. So it's slightly more protective. And I, I believe we did get a letter from Conservation Commission on it, which, uh, Mr. Demerit, the Chair of the Concom is here, so if anybody has questions for the Concom, um, we can ask for them to come up, otherwise.
Did anybody get a letter from him?
I, I didn't see it in here, but I thought we had one that came through.
I think it's sent, I mean, I didn't know that was everybody, but
Okay.
So basically, again, I think it's just procedural at this point, but I know since we did get someone, a butter reached out indicating that had they been aware, uh, had they received notification, they would have been, they would have planned to be here tonight to be able to provide input. I do think it's in the best interest of the town and the applicant to go back through, double-check the abutter list. Um, I guess there's some instructions specifically about, there's notes or something about when plans are, because the, the tax maps, the GIS layer only gets updated once a year. So how that, how that works, um, I think it was a learning moment for everybody, so. Is there any other discussion from the board tonight on this? Again, acting on waivers, we'll potentially have three waivers, uh, identified, the additional one that not here tonight would be potentially for, uh, iron pins on the midway points, um, potentially a fourth waiver about the, uh, the well radius or alternate, alternate placement on that, so. But we should hold off on, on any kind of final movements until we can get the abutter piece cleaned up.
Do we have to notify all the abutters again, or just the ones that were notified?
No, because any, any abutter that was legally notified, there, the duty falls onto them to pay attention to tonight's meeting for the date and time certain to be continued to. So in my opinion, it would only be any that were identified that potentially might have been missed. Um, so.
And if the town has a list of those abutters that we can get?
We had some instructions provided to us, uh, from one of the abutters, indicating how to, how to, how to, in these cases, see that information, um, where there, I guess it's specifically the notation on the tax card itself, that there was a subdivision, subdivision filed, um, the prior year, which should have triggered a search for, for sublots. I guess it's similar to what other towns do, so, um...
It was seven lots.
We could, yeah, so we could try to get that information, or if you need help identifying that, please reach out to the town, we can try to get in touch with, uh, the pertinent, pertinent board to guide, guide on that. And my goal again would be to not unduly delay this, delay any action on this, so the 23rd, no, yeah, 23rd is our next meeting, um, so if we got the updated abutter, those, those abutter list mailings by Friday, this Friday morning, to allow Alana to actually get it out, uh, to, to the mail.
Okay.
We'd be able to get it out with a 10-day
No, it has to go out Friday.
It would have to go out Friday, yeah, so it, it would have to go out that day. If they're dropped off tomorrow, they could be dropped off somewhere in town office, uh, attention for the land use clerk, so, because she'll be here on Friday again.
And you said the next meeting would be October
Twenty-third, two weeks from tonight. Any further discussion, any other questions from the applicant or the board? If not, a motion to, uh, continue would be in order.
Just want to make a quick comment before that. I personally think it's, uh, you know, really generous that you're considering an easement on that critical wetlands part, even though it's not necessary to try to protect that long-term. I think that's, uh, very generous of you.
Yep.
That's my only comment so far on this.
Does that go all the way back to Bat Creek?
No.
Okay, it's just right behind that.
Yeah, the, the land does, but the
Yeah.
the wetland is not.
Okay.
Goes back a couple hundred feet.
Okay. About just back.
Oh, yeah, whatever, sure.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to continue case 24-014, sub 12-month LLC 104 Stevens Hill Road to October 24th at
Thursday.
October 23rd, Wednesday, October 23rd at 7:00 PM with deliverables due 10 days prior?
Yeah, if there's any changes, any substantial changes, especially if you're revising new plans, um, I think everything so far has been pretty minor that was discussed, um, but if you are going to deliver new plans or ideally 10 days in advance is, is ideal.
We gotta correct that plan with a note on it. Yeah, that's been corrected. I think what, the only thing I would do, uh, after meeting tonight would be to add a secondary potential well, um, to lot A, the 15-acre lot, just so that we have that for discussions. I mean, it's an ample-sized lot, and it's plenty of room for a well, so not to worry about that.
And then just, potentially, if you could, also just write up any additional waiver requests.
Yeah.
So that we can get those and get those reviewed. All right, there's a motion by Mr. Stevens, is there a second?
I'll second it, but do you not want to add the abutter list notification no later than Friday morning?
Okay, um, and I will amend that motion to require the abutters list, the updated abutters list, um, be delivered to the land use clerk by Friday morning.
Yeah.
Friday
This Friday.
Um, October
11.
11.
Still second.
You seconded the amendment, okay. Any further discussion by the board? Otherwise, uh, all those in favor of the, of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries five zero. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, yes, the abutter, it's only the updated abutters that need to be noticed. So anybody that did come here tonight, even if you didn't speak, this case, uh, if you received a butter notification, you will not receive it again for that, that case. Let's give everybody a minute.
I have, um, Chris's message too, if you
Yeah, I didn't.
Didn't see it.
I saw it, but I didn't think it pertained to anything we've heard so far.
Not yet.
That's right, yeah.
Right.
All right, we do have a conceptual before us, uh, as well, so, uh, it's case number, so that, that finished our public hearing portion of the night. We have a case, we started to sign case numbers for these for tracking, 24-015 conceptual Stoddard 163 Stevens Hill Road. Um, conceptual hearings are high-level, non-binding discussions between the board and the applicant, um, often utilized as an optional item for applicants before they invest additional funds to get some, some feedback before they, uh, move forward with a, a full application, so.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Barry Geiger, I'm a jungle beach engineer, so I'm just bringing a colored up plan just to look at, so we can have something to discuss. Um, this is a proposed two-lot subdivision on Stevens Hill Road.
Thank you.
The existing lot is 24-plus acres, uh, we're proposing to knock off, subdivide a little over two acres, um, has sufficient foundation. I have a specific question, which is why I asked for a preliminary here, and regarding some of the procedures with this. And I apologize if I brought too much information, but, um, I would say too much is better than not enough. Specifically, we have, if you look on your plan and not, or the sheet A2 is probably the best to look at.
A2?
A2. Uh, the heavy dash line is the 30,000 square foot area, buildable in below. Uh, we show a legal 4K, a house and a well, all meeting the town's setback requirements, but the 4K we're, what we're proposing to build the house, going in the frontage, and the septic system in front of that, basically. So we show all that information, but the, the, um, 4K isn't all within the building envelope. So my question is, are we required, so I can, I do show an alternate, what I call an alternate 4K in the back of a lot. So my question is, even though we're able to show a legal 4K, so in an area where you put the septic in, am I required to dig additional test pits in the back? That's question number one.
So what I'm understanding is, so you have the, so we, we recognize there was some, the way our zoning ordinance is written right now, there's a piece that should have been clarified about the septic. So you've got the 30K area, which is governed by the
Building setback.
The 50-foot setback all around for the house.
Correct.
We did allow the septic to go within 20 feet, so it's kind of outside that 30K area, so.
Correct, the state requirement is 10-foot setback for septic, so it's, the town requires 20-foot setback.
Yep.
So I show the heavy outline of the building envelope, but my 4K is outside of that building envelope. I don't want to dig more test pits for my client than are required, but if they're required in the area of the alternate, which is all within, completely within the building envelope, 30,000 square foot, then we will.
Yes, I'm, so there, there's an existing house on
No, no house is at all.
Oh, God, okay, I, I was looking at this, because I saw the proposed building and the alternate, so I thought this house, the other house was already existing, so. So on the sheet A2, the one that you have, one, uh, potential house envelope shown as proposed building, is that the one you're, you're discussing, or you
So the smaller one, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I just, there's sort of 4K that wraps around the house. You see that hatching?
Yeah.
It's like, it looks like it's the driveline, but it's actually a 4K.
Well, part, part of it is the driveway.
It wraps around the house and goes to the backyard. So look at, look at one of the other 4K areas, look, look, look to see, it's like a dipple, it's like a, you know, a single-point dipple. That's what the hatching is for the 4K area. If you look around where it says proposed building, well, the building, the, the G side of the, the structure.
Mm-hmm.
They're showing it, follow my finger, it wraps around the house.
Right.
Okay, so
Am I trying to use something
So it's not, so it's not like a rectangle, you're saying it's, it's this, this
Yes, exactly.
This, this shape.
Yeah.
It's got a callout that says 4K area, if you look to the
Yes, it does.
Left of the
But it's hard to follow where exactly it is.
Yeah, it is.
Follow, but you gotta look for the hatching.
But then you have another potential 4K area that says alternate well location, potential 4K area?
Yes. And he's asking, does he need to show test pits for both of those locations or?
Got it, I think.
I don't, oh, alternate 4K is here.
Were you talking about the bottom house, the, the bigler, bigger lot, or the smaller lot?
So what I'm asking is, per state law and town requirement, I can have a 4K here in that septic, in that location. Per this, the town, we also have to show building envelope, which is this heavy or dark line. So part of my 4K at the front of the house, or at the front of the lot, is not within that building envelope. So typically, we would just do sufficient test pits to build our septic and show our 4K works. We're gonna build our septic here because, in the front, because we meet all the state and town requirements with that. But, like I said, the entire 4K isn't within the building envelope, so if the town requires, we'll have to dig additional test pits in the back.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I prefer not to do that, but if it's a town requirement, then we will.
Most of it's not.
And that basically is the same situation in front of the, of the front lot.
Of, of, of the lower lot on here, and that, that's why this one exists here.
Exactly.
Okay, so that, that's basically what you were talking about, is it's either this or this.
Correct. Where, even on the lower lot Correct. Where, even on the lower lot, we're going to build the house where I showed in the front, and I'm going to put the septic here in the front, because we can, we have an area where we can meet all the setbacks for the house and the septic system. But because I don't have the house and septic, the 4K area is shown in the building envelope that's required, do I have to dig additional test pits in the back and disturb more areas, even though I'm not going to build my house in the back?
Well, personally, I don't care where you build the house. I don't care where you put the septic system or where you put the well. Our job is to ensure that the lot contains capability for all three.
Agreed.
Right?
So, yeah, so I guess the only comments on that, so the way our zoning is written, so when we amended the zoning ordinance, when the zoning warrants was amended to make the setbacks for the well, I'm sorry, for the 4K area less restrictive, so taking it from 50 to 20, the note about the contiguous area, that should have been pulled out or adding clarifying language. So my understanding of what you're saying is, the way you're potentially showing it would be within, within the 20 feet that it's required by zoning, but it just wouldn't be fully contained within the 30K, which is, my understanding of the way the zoning ordinance was amended was, that's acceptable.
That...
It's the, but the 30K itself is governed by the ability to place the house lot, the house itself, so 50-foot setbacks all around, that's where you get your 30K, but yes, the 4K can go outside of that and then stay within 20 feet. The... So the well radius would have to be on the parcel entirely, especially where, you know, it's outside the subdivision, so just a slight shift of your proposed well to keep the radius within the full subdivision that's 19.3 or 18.3, as we discussed today. And then the only other question about the proposed 4K area, I've never seen one that's kind of, I don't think I've ever seen one that was non-rectangular in shape, but maybe that's just more of a standard than a, than a practice, you know, as long as it meets the, meets everything.
A lot of times you see it, you can kind of see it where you wrap around the 75-foot lot and setback, so then it wouldn't be rectangular.
And for the larger proposed lot, the one that would, where you've got a house lot that's not labeled and then alternate house location, that's, that's, do you have any question on that for us, or is that...
No, I think you've answered that with what we discussed, because if I do test pits in the front, they're not in the 30,000 square foot, but I do have room for both an alternate 4K, which I call in the back, and the house in that 30,000 square foot building envelope.
You pointed to that for the other one, so where does that house go to? I'm confused what the lots look like.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to...
So the orange is the divider, the dividing line that we're proposing.
So you're going to, this place is, lot is getting subdivided where there is a lot that actually wraps around?
Another lot.
Another lot, okay.
So this is 24-acre parcel, and they're subdividing off this 2-acre parcel.
Okay.
Right, so...
What he's saying is that he couldn't get the 4K area in, down here?
Correct, I can't get...
So he can put it, he can do it back here?
Correct. No, no, I'm sorry. I can get a 4K in the front. It's shown right there.
You're saying, but if it had to be inside the 50-foot?
So if you were to come before us with a plan, would you be, would you just be showing those two front, frontage lots, those two that are close to the...
Well...
For the building envelopes, or would you be showing...
Yes, I mean, it's a subdivision, right, so the house location doesn't really matter as long as you can put the house within...
The 30K.
The setbacks. So I do show for this, the larger lot, this is the 30,000 square foot area, because I don't have 30,000 square foot on the frontage where we're actually going to propose the house, when they build it, if they build it.
Oh, I understand, okay, so that, that's a different, so for that situation, the, when, when we've had this in the past with other subdivisions, the 30K area that's shown is where the house, the house can be placed somewhere within that when it's built, so it's not...
So absolutely, it's the opposite, so I think...
Basically, I think what he's saying is, he can, he can prove that this lot, this L-shaped lot, is acceptable with the house and everything out here, forget about this here. But if somebody was to look at the plans, it would, I'm assuming, it would be easier and better to sell the lot with the stuff out front here, even though this proves the lot, it would be better to have proof here.
You can't do that.
Did I say that okay?
You're very close, yes. For the town regulations, I have to show a 30,000 square foot area for each lot. That's building.
But that's where the building won't go.
That's where it's supposed to build.
That is where it's...
You're not required to build it now.
No.
I think it's a shall be place.
You just have to prove it to us.
You're required to build it and build the setbacks.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
So, no, it specifically, it specifically says in zoning that the 30,000 square foot area is where the house and septic shall be placed, shall be placed. So when this gets to the building inspector and they go to issue a building permit, if the house is being built here and not here, they're most likely going to deny the building permit, because it's not within the 30K area. So you're, you're creating a non-conformity. You're saying, we know we don't have our space here, but we're going to build, we've sent people to zoning for this in the past.
That wasn't my take on it.
I don't agree with that, but that's all right. I understand what you're saying, but...
Because why would you build in an area that you, you're not conforming to?
Right.
Who says you're not conforming to?
And what would prevent...
All we require is that 30K area exists someplace on the lot.
Where the house shall be placed.
Well, yes, you read that. I didn't read it.
Yeah, no, it's okay, so it's...
But I understand what you're saying.
But I'm saying, like, why would you, why would we go through a whole process and allow people to build outside of the area that's approved? So it's the same thing with like driveway, you know, proposed driveways and things like that. That's ideally where they're going to be put.
What we don't ask for is to have the developer provide us with the entire buildable envelope that exists on that lot. We're only, we don't do that.
You're right, because, because normally, the way it's been understood, in my opinion, is where they're showing us the buildable area is where they're going to put the house, within that 30,000.
I hear you, but that's not proving a lot to me. There's, it looks like a whole mess of area here that, where they could build the house, if in fact you were able to create the 30,000 square foot.
And I'm playing devil's advocate, this lot is 22 acres.
Yeah, that doesn't mean it's all usable, though.
No, you're right, but there could be, there could be over 10 acres that would meet all the requirements of your 30,000 square foot. But you're saying that I can only put it in this location.
The word says show.
If the person, because I'm not building the house, I'm subdividing the lot.
Right.
So if a person comes along and they buys this lot that's been subdivided, and they say, I want to put it directly in the middle, and there's 10 acres that meet all these requirements right here, the board's take is that that's the only place it could go, because that's the only place it's shown on the subdivision plan?
That's been my understanding. I think the last time, I mean, how is it crazy?
It's crazy.
Their plan.
To modify your plan to show a different location for a lot.
Well...
How do we do that?
As, I'm a resident of this town as well, but playing devil's advocate again, you're asking a homeowner or a lot owner now to come back and do what I'm doing here in front of the board, you know, the time, the survey, all this stuff, to show that they can build a house that's less than 1,500 square feet typically, 2,000 square feet, on 20-plus acres.
But what you're saying is that you don't have the 30,000 there, where you want to put the house. It's not so much that...
No, he has the 30,000, but the 4K doesn't fit in the 30,000.
No, no, he has, he doesn't have the 30,000.
He doesn't have the 30. That's what he said.
To clarify, in the front, we don't have 30,000 square feet. That meets all the setback requirements.
So he doesn't, so he can't put the house there?
But we meet all the setback requirements where it's shown.
I need to get my glasses out again.
So the only, the, I'm trying to remember, I think it was Route 4, the lots that were going on, that went up near the condos, between Freeman Hall, so when you go from Freeman Hall to, towards Northwood, the lots on the right that have, there's a shared driveway and a couple lots. I believe they, I believe that one went through a variance for somewhere, somewhere where they could show, but I could be wrong on what example it was. But normally, my understanding is, again, when there's a subdivision before us, you know, it's up to the applicant to showing us where they're potentially going to put the house with that, that meets zoning. If it doesn't meet zoning, then it doesn't meet zoning, so, so they shouldn't be showing us where, you know, where they might want to put something, but it doesn't, if it doesn't meet our regs, the ordinances, then, you know, it's kind of moot.
I would disagree with that, just because they're not the same person typically. If you subdivide, I mean, just like Mr. Falzone was in here, he's subdivided tons of lots in this town.
Well, you know.
He doesn't necessarily build them all. So if he sells a lot, then, you know, he's not going to show you, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be beholden on the person that buys a lot to stick to the plan that whomever showed you where that 30,000 square foot is.
But his plans do show a 30,000 envelope where the house and the well and the septic go with each of his little teeny lots that he sells in those open space developments.
And we can show a 30,000 square foot that a house could go.
But that's not where you're planning on putting it.
You're correct.
I see the wetlands now. You'd have to cross wetlands in order to get there anyway. That has some significant issues.
That was my next question.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, that other question. I don't know what application, an owner of a property would provide to some board to indicate, I don't want to build my house where it shows on the plan, I want to build it out here because I can and meet all, all zoning requirements. What form do you fill out? There isn't one.
Well, I, Alana, you work in the office, I don't mean to put you on the spot at all, but do, do applicants come in and say, I bought this lot and it shows a house here, but this is not where I want to put my house?
I don't get that question, but I would, I think, I think that Dale probably assumes that the house, where the house is supposed to be built, is what the planning board approves. I don't think he would, like, know how to question it if they put it somewhere else. So I do think that's...
And we can, that's the thing, I guess we can, you know, this is conceptual, so we do have some time. We can ask, you know, we can, you can ask the building inspector that question as to, and I know that he pulls plans, you know, before issuing building permits, so if they have a subdivision plan and it's showing house here, but someone's showing something way different, I don't know how he would handle that. I'm guessing it's not very common, but maybe it is, so. So we can reach out for that, but, you know, that does bring up the question again, like, even if you are showing the 30K back here, that's, the problem is, then you run into all the other items that would have to be overcome to be able to get back there, you know, the conditional use permit or, or variance potentially for the wetlands impacts, and I don't know if there's anything else, but I know there would at least be a significant, likely a significant impact to wetlands, unless there was a, no, I don't see it, so.
I take it there's no way you can reconfigure the, the smaller 2-acre lot in a way, I see it's kind of bounded by wetlands on that eastern side of it, is that right, Jeff?
In order to provide the...
In order to provide the 30,000 for the other larger L-shaped lot.
We can, I can look at that, I don't, I don't know that...
It seems like it's a tough space to...
We basically have 400 feet of frontage, and so the line has to start here, but we can, and we, you know, our intent was to try to follow that existing stone wall as much as possible. Are you showing this lot as only 198?
Yes.
No, it's, we didn't label the lot, the exterior. So there's two lots, there's 198 and 20640.
Wait, because 198 somehow leads to 200?
No, it's, the existing line is 198 plus 206, which is over 400, and we, we don't actually set it right there.
Well, it says iron pin pound.
Yeah, that's the existing line.
Right, and I'm assuming you measured to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're not subdividing at that line.
Okay, all right.
Because that was my question, too.
Do you have anything, just, you know, I don't know, comes into play anywhere on here, but steep slopes?
Yeah, we reviewed those, I can just turn those on.
Just so that, just so that it's a little bit more clear, you brought us some drawings showing a subdivision, each subdivision has a house on it, but I may or may not build a house there.
Correct.
Okay.
And this, and being conceptual, there's, there's not full data on here, you know, so the applicant has specifically left off some things like steep slopes and those things because it is a conceptual.
It was subdivided. It doesn't have a house on there yet.
So this was already subdivided?
Yeah, I mean, it was subdivided in the past, I think it was in the 90s.
Oh, but not the 1 and 2?
Oh, no, sorry, I didn't know that.
Okay.
This whole lot was...
I'm just saying, there was four lots that were subdivided, a larger lot, I think was back in the 90s.
I wonder, what is the attraction for Stevens Hill?
It's available land.
Oh, is that...
This is a family area, so this is all, all of a sudden, family, and one of the grandchildren would like to go down there.
Gotcha.
And doesn't this lot have some rather distinctive...
Features?
Not habitat, but growth on it?
In the back.
In the back, yeah.
Yeah, well-developed, or well-forested. Is that, was that your question?
With very rare stuff.
Oh, that I don't know about.
Pretty sure it does.
I'll put that on my list.
Rare stuff, huh?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
I believe this is the lot. I don't know that it is, but there's stuff out there that is. We found it on a sidewalk.
Is, I don't know breaks in that wetland?
In the past?
Does it, from...
Yeah, way in the back.
Long side to long side?
The past?
Correct.
Sidewalk in the past?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 in the 90s when they were splitting up.
Yeah, I mean...
So are it 28 acres, you do, I don't know how it helps if you do the backlog, correct?
It's too, it doesn't qualify, it's got too much frontage.
Oh, okay.
And it doesn't, well, we gotta see if it predated the, the lot record date piece there. So, yeah, I'm not trying to be overly difficult, but again, so if the, if this, if this were to come before us, you know, the way I believe the board's interpreted in the past is, it's had to go to get, you know, zoning relief, if something like this were to be proposed, where they're showing a 30K, but because of the uniqueness of the property, the disturbance and everything else that would be involved, you know, the proposal would be to show that, somehow lock off the lot, so it would be, you know, it can never be subdivided less than that, and then get relief to allow the house to be built outside of the building envelope. But even to propose the building envelope where it is, you know, there's going to be, you have to show access to it, so it would, there's going to be variances or conditional use permits that are going to be required to be able to even get to that, what actually is the building envelope, because of the wetlands crossing it at minimum. Is my opinion.
How, oh, yeah, the building envelope ends up being about 15K, right? Something like that.
Oh, for the, the front?
Yeah, so you're not even close.
I didn't measure it, but...
Yeah, but not even close, okay. Yeah, but, yeah, not even close, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I'm not, yeah, yeah, so I'm not certain quite how to, uh, how to guide you on, on that specific one beyond, beyond that, but I think there would be some, uh, variance that would be needed or.
Well, I guess with the permit interpretations, that we would either need, like you said, relief to build in the, or show our house in the front of a lot outside the building envelope, or we need relief to cross the wetlands to access the other building envelope?
Yeah, and in the, so the wetlands impact is conditional use permit potentially, so it'd be this board as part of the application versus a variance. It still potentially could.
Could change that?
It did, yeah, so, so that initially is to potentially hold it within, within the application, but doesn't mean it wouldn't go to zoning at some point for that, but, or actually, no, it doesn't go to zoning. So it's conditional use permit for wetlands impacts now, beyond any other permits.
So not to belabor the point, but I have twenty-two acres. If I didn't, the way that you guys, the board has spoken tonight, you're restricting my house location to thirty thousand square foot. Or do I show the building envelope everything that meets the requirements of it, which could be twelve acres, and say, I meet that requirement, so I can put it anywhere I want. That's within the building envelope.
So I guess during, when things are subdivided specifically, individuals are showing us the area that they would propose to put the, put the house and show that it could be built. So, I understand what you're saying, to your point of, well, you convey the lot later on, someone else is tied, you know, stuck to that, but if you build the house, they're stuck to that spot too unless they go through and tear it down and, and move it, so. Again, the way I've always seen these is, and the way the zoning reads is that shall is the biggest part. You know, and it's a lot different from the way this lot is now, potentially where it may not show a thirty K at all, but when it goes through a zoning process, a subdivision process, that then puts in whatever the restrictions are within the current, current ordinance, to it, in the interpretation there.
So your interpretation is that I can only show a thirty thousand square foot?
Let's go back and read.
It does, it does say a minimum of thirty thousand. But remember, it has to be contiguous.
Yeah.
It has to be upland. Can't have any of the not appropriate for building, limited for building, and nothing, and it can't be less than fifty feet wide at any point.
Right.
But without a notch. And you can't do that and include that upland front area.
Devil's advocate.
Oh, yes.
So, you know, if, if I had ten acres that met all those requirements, then I wouldn't want to limit my proposed building envelope to thirty thousand square feet, especially if I'm selling it.
Right.
So if you meet the setbacks, right, you should be able to build the house where it meets the setbacks. So devil's advocate again, if I had twelve acres in the middle of that lot that met all the setback requirements, plus the fifty-foot width, then I should show a twelve-acre building envelope. I mean, the way I interpret it is, we show a thirty thousand square foot building envelope for a potential location to show that we can do that on that lot. That doesn't restrict the lot. What restricts the lot, the house location, are the setbacks. You have building setbacks for the lot lines, and you have wetland setbacks. So if you can fit the house in those setbacks, you should be able to put the house there.
I would agree with you.
I don't see why not.
But I mean, that's.
But that would.
But that's gonna require more surveying and proving out of those uplands and, and everything else, that, so the building inspector can go look at this plan and say, okay, this was surveyed, this was reviewed and approved by the planning board, but if you're saying now I want to put the house somewhere back here, we don't know, and we might have granted waivers, you know, for contours and everything else beyond that point. So it's gonna.
That would have limited the building envelope as I would envision it, because he, he hasn't gone back there to determine what the setbacks are.
Right.
So it would limit it, but if that was twelve acres, that's twelve acres.
But they're not really showing the setbacks anywhere else outside of, either, that's what I'm saying, so they would still have to end up resurveying to show, like, oh, I want to put the house here.
For this particular thing.
I'm just saying, as an example, if this was, you know, a large lot, which it is, but if they want to say, well, you know, we showed the thirty K here, but in reality we're gonna put the house here. Well, that wasn't surveyed to show all the setbacks and everything else potentially, to show that, that exists, so that the building inspector would have to say, well, now you have to resurvey that to show that, that it does meet all that.
Right.
Yeah, but if that, if it was shown as that, is what I'm, what I think he's suggesting, is that this back area, forget about the wetlands that are there, 'cause that just adds another layer, but if, if this, if, if this parcel had no wetlands and was all uplands, it seems like to me that if he showed a building envelope that encompasses as far back as he wants to go with the topography stuff, he, he draws the line on the backside as to that's the back of my envelope and that's ten acres. I, I don't see any problem with that.
No, I'm saying that the house can go anywhere within.
Within that.
Ten acres, 'cause it.
He shows a house, he shows a well, you know, all that kind of.
That building envelope is shown on the plan that, you know, of the subdivision, that.
Sure.
Yeah, that seems, seems like what our regulations call for.
Well, it doesn't say minimum in the zoning for those sizes, but.
It does in the lot envelope. Here, it talks about the, in the, in the residential Article two, C two, E, doesn't say, say minimum, but lot, the definition of lot envelope does say minimum. So I, I would say on that side, if someone were to come before us and show, show a hundred thousand square feet of contiguous area that meets all, perfect, like, to, to answer Mr. Guy's question on that, I think that would be the workaround. But again, that means all that additional surveying is occurring now versus, you know, five, ten years from now, when someone decides to move, try to put a house somewhere else.
But at, at least he has one out here.
Just an FYI, if we put a septic system, say we, I want to put a house in the middle of a lot, even though my building envelope is at the front of the lot, that's shown on the subdivision plans, we'd still have to survey sufficiently to show all the wetlands, the setbacks, um, all that information, and that comes to, I believe that comes to the town as well, if, if septic systems do, but. So if, if that information wasn't shown on the original subdivision, it definitely would be as part of the building inspector's review.
So Barry, can I, do I interpret this, um, lot correctly, that the test pit labeled one and two, were the previous subdivision test pits, or were those ones you did?
Those were ones, so this is kind of a, this project's kind of morphed. Originally, the intent was just to build a, one house on the property.
Oh, okay.
So we dug the test pits, um, proved that it can work.
Okay.
Then they decided that they wanted to provide two lots, so it's morphed.
I was gonna say, it's greater than five acres, so it wouldn't add test pits anyway, but, okay.
And then, just obviously the reminder, Stevens Hill, scenic road, so it would go through that process, which means concom review, so if you do come before, you know, go and move forward with this, like the applicant that was here tonight, you know, they decided to, to preempt that and go ahead of time to try to, to, uh, get those comments in instead of having continuances and stuff, so. There'd be that part of it, yep.
Thank you, Alana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we can, we have some time, so we can, um, under others, well, we have a potential discussion of zoning ordinances and changes, steep slopes, ADUs, review attached, detached, setbacks for pre-existing non-conforming lots. I would like us to continue moving forward with these, either at this meeting and then the next meeting, and then try to get some stuff on the agenda. The other items that I'd like to potentially hammer out and maybe get done this year would be at least any corrections that we've identified within the subdivision site plan regulations. We know there's some stuff in there that's wrong and can be clarified, there's a housekeeping piece, and then I think we're potentially gonna add some verbiage for a couple of items, you know, like culvert design and such, so getting that potentially added in. But tonight we do have the three, so I don't know if anybody's any chance to, to look into these a little bit more. We had some draft language, proposed. I know Mr. Evans had sent an email, uh, to Alana, uh, for us to potentially include for consideration tonight on some of these, so I can read his comments, uh, if, if you'd like, or. Well, I'll read those, so we have three potential items. Steep slopes, ADUs, so Mr. Evans comments, I'll read them for the board, in case it didn't make it to everybody.
I will.
I'll attach some proposed wording, so I don't know if we got, did we get the, I didn't see any attached wording, Alana, I don't know if you saw it, but he, he had some wording apparently that he was gonna, um, add in for possible consideration for detached ADUs that was modified from another town. He's still in favor of detached ADUs, and he indicates as it does a state law to require these on every residential lot, and not all existing homes can on their own be converted to a home with an ADU. An example is a one thousand square foot ranch. Does one cut that into a five hundred square foot home and a five hundred square foot ADU? Or convert a detached garage barn, outbuilding. It's nice to have family in-laws nearby but not necessarily living in your home twenty-four seven. My only correction to that is it is not state law. State law does not require it on every residential lot. If it did, this would be a moot point. State law allows towns to decide if they're, they require allowance of ADUs. They do not, then they make it optional for towns to allow detached ADUs. So that's why we're discussing it. The town currently only allows attached, uh, and then there's been, you know, it's been proposed a couple of times from the public to potentially consider and detach.
I included detachment.
Okay, so the attachment was, was not included, which I'm guilty of all the time. Steep slopes, uh, his comment on that was, I'm against further restrictions tightening the noose on housing. House, house Nottingham function was, without steep slope zoning for over three hundred years, if anything is added, such as additional layer of restrictions to have yet another area of dotted lines on a plan to try to interpret whether those are allowed, not allowed. Part of the envelope setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, seems more restrictive and apt to cause more confusion. My thought is if someone wants to build on a slope to have a view, walkout basement, that is their right. If a steep slope verbiage is added, I request that verbiage be added that the planning board can grant a conditional use permit to override if reasonable circumstances were, were under request of owners presented. I guess my comments on, on those is, a lot of things have occurred for over three hundred years, and, and, uh, doesn't mean it, it was the best practice, and, and you see some of that, some of that now, but, um, we are planning board, we're forward looking, uh, we do use, looking backwards as well to try to guide us. And I think the way we had had this listed potentially was to apply it to major subdivisions and then have it have a measurable amount of impact before it was triggered. It wouldn't be just every lot. It's more, again, the way it was written, drafted, but not necessarily, doesn't mean the board's stuck to that, is to really tackle the things that are gonna have the highest amount of impact on a steep slope, which are major subdivisions, um, you know, areas with, where you're seeing significant amount of cuts and fills and drainage changes. So I, I don't think it would stop, uh, walkout basement, um, and things of that nature as long as it's, you know, it, and we're talking twenty-five percent or more slope.
Right now.
Initially.
Unfit for building includes steep slope.
So you can't consider that in the building envelope only?
Which would you couldn't set a house there?
So you couldn't set a house there, but we've, it doesn't protect that slope from part of the thing that is most impactful, which is a road going in.
Right, which is gonna be my next question. I want to make sure, 'cause there is two separate areas, you're talking about. Your development impacts are setting of a house and then roadways, so, and, and that's where this is looking, we're looking to try to make it apply to the roadways, 'cause right now it doesn't. Correct?
So it's, the way it was potentially being proposed was that it would apply to the cumulative impact of a steep slope. So, yes, so, I mean, the house lot can't go on it, but drainage structures can. Currently, drainage structures are, are in there, um, the roadways.
Do we have challenges in this area right now? Do we have developments that are going in that are challenged because of the twenty-five, we don't have one right now, but if we were.
We have two that were approved, so the Pataque Way Ridge off one fifty-six. So if you look at the.
Is it gonna be anymore?
No.
Well, it is, so, but if you look at the cuts and fills that had, had to be proposed for that, so again, it, it'll be helpful to see ones that's kind of done to what that looks like. I think that, there was some on Route four that were done, it was, house, individual house lots, I think it was four house lots. The other one on Smoke Street with the, the two cul-de-sacs and then the two lots off of, uh, another road.
There were five lots on Poor Farm Road out by Ledge Farm that also went through some.
So if you had this in place as a regulation at twenty-five degrees, then those subdivisions would not have been built?
They would have had to, potentially.
They would have had to remediate, we allow, we allow them to remediate, right?
Uh, they would have had to go.
Cut and fill, as you call it.
If they couldn't do an alternative proposal that didn't have such drastic impacts to those areas, then they would have had to go through either a conditional use permit process if we had that listed, or, uh, zoning variance.
So we're looking at adding a new regulation of twenty-five degrees, steep slope for, you say major subdivisions, but what if Joe and Sally want to build a house on that hill? We're not gonna, uh, it won't impact them?
Not the way it was proposed, not the way it was drafted. So we could change it. Again, it is, is all, right now, it's all just.
Sure, that's why we're talking about it.
Yeah, so the way it was proposed was that.
Cannot build their house on twenty-five percent still.
Right, I'm sorry.
Can't. If they need a roadway.
A driveway.
Or a driveway to get to said house, like, that, this, you know, there's, that's a big hill somewhere.
It is.
If they want to do this, and they have to go over that, that's twenty-five percent, they couldn't do that, is what's being proposed.
They couldn't cut through that hill?
They can right now, but the idea is to not allow that.
They would still be able to, if it was a minor subdivision.
Right.
But not a major, so four more lots, you know, the bigger, the major developments that usually involve, you know, the engineered drainage structures and.
The problem I have with that, however, is that we saw this on Garland Road where the requirement for cisterns was there if you built over, if you developed over four lots or something to that effect. So they developed three, and then another three, and then another three. They never put in the cistern. So the major, minor, it, it, I understand it, but there's ways around it that you can still cut through those slopes, so.
Or build on it. I mean, I've seen houses way up on a hill that are just, the driveway's a switchback.
Yeah, great question, yeah.
You know, there's ways, there's ways to get around it.
There are, but you're probably not gonna see, you, in that example, you know, they're all frontage lots probably, you're not seeing any new roadway going in. Instead.
But, but I'm, I'm just saying that. Usually, if you had to build a roadway, it would be a major subdivision. Would not be minor.
Right.
That's the saving grace to it, but if somebody did have the money to do that and only develop three lots or whatever the requirement is.
Then they get stuck on four, the four, the four-year, the four-year hold. So they get this, yeah, if it's one parcel, I see what you're saying, but they would get stuck at the four-year hold on the, on the, re-subdivision.
It's just, you know, how, how deep the pockets, pockets are realistically. So seems like if steep slopes is something we want to protect, to me, we ought to protect all of them.
All of it, not, not just subdivisions, but all of it.
I'm saying in regards to the planning board, that those areas would not be with, obviously within the building envelope and some of that kind of stuff, but any roadway system would not be able to be built either.
Yeah, but everybody builds a driveway. Is that a roadway system?
The, the, there is a requirement that the road, the driveway be a negative slope coming onto any roadway system. So depending upon how that works and whether they can. get that, um...
Yeah.
It would be negative slope too, so it's like, we're thinking, I think we're always thinking like a road, and then your house lots are going to go in up here, down, but there's also the opposite effect, which is road, and the house lots are, are down, are running away from it. But, I think, again, it's, we're always trying to balance, I think we, well, we always, I think we try to, we strive to strike a balance of, you know, the, maybe the family subdivision of the one lot kind of thing, and that, you know, versus the bigger ones, which are generally, you know, going to be done completely different. And with the driveway, the impact is, even if it was to go on a steep slope and would have to have significant impact to make the grade, the requirements for like width, and even the percent of the slope is different than it is for a road. So, the road would have a higher degree, you know, degree of destabilization or impact than, than even several driveways, miniature wood.
Did you say there was a certain amount of steep slope disturbance that would trigger the proposed regulation? And if so, if there's an amount of disturbance that triggers it, why not just make that amount of disturbance apply to major, minor, anything that's going to disturb that much, if that's our goal, to try to protect steep slopes from major disturbance?
To me, that goes back to Mr. Severin's point.
True.
Yeah, just adding on to that. So, these are all things to discuss, you know, if we hash this out, and if it does go, you know, if we do look to potentially add, this is a warrant article for January, and have whole public hearings on it. Those are all pieces we want to kind of, these are just early discussions, so that, you know, we brainstorm it, are prepared, try to think of all those kind of questions. How would it apply, so that if it does move forward in any way, shape, or form, you know, we've vetted that and can answer that for, for the public.
So, a couple of things. One is, getting it passed, right, getting it through town meetings, as I pointed out, carving out the sort of family lots of two, two-lot subdivision, three-lot subdivision, eliminate that concern for most people, because this is now applying to your larger scale ones. So, it makes, so maybe you're not capturing everything that you want, but you're capturing a lot, and you've got a higher percentage chance of getting something passed.
That makes sense.
True statement.
So, so that's what they do. Two, something, you know, the other community I worked in Strapper, is their steep slopes, as relates to the construction of roads and driveways, is in their subdivision regulations, not their zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance just simply says, you cannot, no structure shall be located in an area of 25% slope or greater that extends from 1 to 40 yards out of feet. So, it's, it's a pretty cut and dry thing, you know, fun houses, ardens, whatever, on steep slopes. Then when it comes into the subdivision piece between roads and driveways, that's when it starts to get into the nuancing of it. And that makes it something that, one, you can, you can grant a waiver for. You don't have to, you don't have to grant waivers. You could treat it like a, well, treat it like some, I guess maybe like the conditional use permit, where you, it's still something that you guys approve, but you set some standards to approve. That can start to get complicated, but whatever. So, you know, you can, you can pull, you sort of separate this out and make it part of the zoning and part of the regulations that you have a little more control over. And then, the other piece was, that they, that they do is, it's, I can't find it, but I know where it said, some of the fact of driveways that are paved can go up to say like 12% grade, driveways that are unpaved can only go up to 8% grade. So, that's another way to sort of carve it out a little bit. Roadways are obviously, you know, supposed to be paved if they're class five, if you make, you know, bend function on it, that's supposed to be paved and stuff. But, those are just some of the things that, you know, I had found in other communities that, that might be applicable here.
Yeah, I think some of that, some of the like performance standards, some of that would just be removed because redundant within, you know, we have roadway standards and driveway standards already, so I wouldn't think we need to redefine it, unless we're allowing for something, you know, greater than what's set elsewhere, but I guess I'd like to avoid that piece of it, of creating a separate standard for the driveways and roadways.
So, I'm interested how everybody in the board feels. Do you feel like we should be regulating steep slopes?
Personally, I, you know, this has been something that was, comes, goes back to the last master plan update, but the way I see it, and what I see being developed now is, you know, a lot of the areas that in the past wouldn't have been, but due to economy, not due to, not due, the site is favorable, it's just because what can be overcome now because of the cost delta of what you can sell it for, is there. So, you know, when I, when I see like the amount of cut and fill that has to occur to get, you know, two-to-one side slope or three-to-one side slope, you know, you're seeing 30 and 40-foot cuts and then fills that are 100 feet wide or more, so it's, I see it as just a very extremely large disturbance that is then going to be there forever. Usually, you have to have, you know, more advanced drainage structures, or things that potentially that the town is going to be responsible for unless it's kept in the HOA as being their requirement to take care of forever, perpetuity. So, I look at it more of those reasons, as to when you, when you do see these, but I do like the balance, I guess, the balance approach of, and yes, I understand it could be, the system could be gamed a little bit, as can anything, as can our current regs. I like the balanced approach of, you know, trying to do this with a measured hand of, you know, set some criteria. These areas, yes, would potentially have quite a bit of disturbance, but it's not the same as having to drop in a new road over those areas.
Right. And to me, when you have disturbances that big, especially ones that require entirely new drainage layouts for the site, you know, when you change them to man-made structures, you're really, you know, changing the habitat of that area too. And Nottingham is a place that has quite a bit of really prime habitat, and even the not really prime habitat, when you change that, it can be, you know, connected to other prime habitats, and changing the way that that land works can have impacts that aren't, aren't obvious for years to come sometimes. Steep slopes are a very sensitive area ecologically, same with wetlands.
One other, on this draft that I think Blair did, that, page one, that actually is on page two, and three, go over to four. To me, there's a lot of good stuff in this particular thing, because it provides the purpose. And I was surprised to see there's what, six, six purposes associated with the, the steep slopes, why you protect them. But, other towns have similar things that exist, but, but what is written here, to me, seems to be an appropriate approach to having a steep slope district, protection Just as a thing, I mean, it talks about the driveways, it talks about roads, seems to cover pretty much everything that I think we've talked about tonight. That doesn't mean the other ones don't either, but I mean...
So, I think the way this is drafted now, you know, some of the definitions we've already got, select and per re-service, I don't think there's a need for, for touching that. Potentially updating the unfit for building definition. As you flip the pages, we know there's some nebulous numbers on here. The 2,000 square foot contiguous area, you know, that's, that's up for debate, as to if that's the number the board wants to go with. As you go into permitted activities, I think D, single-family residential, that doesn't, that would be, that would probably be pulled out, because if we're applying this to...
It's the only one that's missing something.
You know, under the applicability, if we're saying it's applying to major subdivisions only in site plans, then we don't need, I don't think we need that piece, unless I'm And then, under performance standards, I think pulling out the, the roadbed piece in the driveway parks, we already have that defined somewhere else, and I think it just adds a conflict. And as for the, like C, some of these would be, probably be more appropriate for, in my opinion, probably if we're going to do a conditioning experiment or, or a special exception language, like those would probably be the criteria for it, more than saying they're at, they're allowed. I think that's been, was a problem with this, and why, like last year, or the year before, you know, I proposed to re-table it, because it's like, well, if you're just allowing these things anyway, then you're not really, you're kind of, you know, going back and negating the other parts of it.
May I ask, if we adopt this steep slope to 25 degrees, how many properties, how many homes in New Hampshire would become non-conforming?
New Hampshire or Nottingham?
I'm sorry, Nottingham.
How many what?
How many homes in Nottingham would become non-conforming because they built on greater than 20, 25-degree slopes?
It wouldn't make any home non-conforming. It could potentially make lots non-conforming to major subdivisions.
Okay.
So, because, well, the way it's proposed right now is that if we're, if the applicability is only towards major subdivisions, then it avoids that non-conformance issue.
Right, right. Major subdivisions.
And, and it would be proposed lots, not present lots.
Right.
Right.
He's just wondering if there are, I think, are there homes currently built that would then be going out?
Yeah, I'm out of compliance.
There's...
Well, again, there are already, this is what I'm not going to do with it, because this applies to roads and driveways, not house lots, because currently, we're not approving house, house locations on the 25% slope.
Right, it can't be in the...
Now, if somebody did it before we put that regulation in place, well, then they became non-conforming for something else.
Different.
Not right now. Not that we're going to need this course to do.
Yeah, this, the way this was kind of drafted was, again, like future-looking, not, and to try to take that into account, to not trigger that and make people non-conforming, or add restrictions to houses that are currently here that were built. It was really to try to tackle some of the bigger development issues.
You know, it's interesting, I was just thinking about, a couple of years ago, when Fire Chief came to us and he wanted to buy a great big new truck of Quince, is that what he called it? Ladder truck and all that, and a number of questions that we asked him, the biggest one was, "Can you get that down on driveways?" And his answer was, "Mm, mostly no."
Yeah.
My, my question with it all is, with the number of waiver requests that come before us, are we going to be, are we beating our heads against the wall to, to come up with something that the developers are going to come in and say, "I'm on a waiver for this, and it gets granted?"
You don't have to grant a waiver, that's very...
But, but, tell me the number of times we say no to a waiver request.
Well, I have a question on that, because if you say no the first time, you can say no subsequent. If you say yes the first time, then you may feel compelled to say yes to everyone else who's coming after that. So, you need to put your feet in the sand on the first time.
So, I think that's, by potentially placing this in the zoning, it gets rid of the waiver option. So, if we put in subdivision and site plan regulations, waivers are there unless there was language added to say, "These are not, not, not..."
Not subject to waivers.
Yes, those words. I guess, the way I see it is, I think putting it in the zoning does make sense, because that really gives it a lot of teeth. It makes people, people pay attention to it. But to Mrs. Baskin's point, I think if it ends up in subdivision site plan regs, we should add that language of, of, you know, there's criteria, or it's, you know, it's not waivable, it's not subject to waivers. Because again, yeah, I think if you just allow it to be open to waivers, it really just says, well, it's kind of...
Yeah.
It's important, but it's, you know, you can ask for it to not be...
Well, waste our time if they can just waiver, they can just get waivers, so.
That's my thought.
I like that language. I can get behind that on a major subdivision. 25 degrees, not subject to waiver.
So, I guess the other option is, if we move it forward to zoning, the board always has the option, you know, if the warrant article, for some reason fails, you can, you can always be added into subdivision site plan regulations. But to me, this seems more like it's a zoning protection, kind of like our other overlay districts. So, it feels, I think I go back to Mr. Haney's thing, is don't, don't, don't regulate through the, through the subdivision site plan regulations, use the zoning ordinance for that. But, there's also times where if you're tackling subdivisions, it seems like it's more important, so.
But I go back to then, again, to do, we have people then coming before the zoning board, asking for variances to these. Are we going to make it so that this is not a variance request, this is firm?
I don't think we can. I think, I think anything you put in zoning is always, oh, you know, you can always go for variance for it. I don't think we can, we can't, unless we do conditional use permits. That's the only thing, in my understanding, that would keep something from ZBA, because if the board denies a CUP, it goes to Superior Court repeal, is my understanding. I'm seeing some nods. So, that's the only thing that keeps something out of ZBA's hands.
Okay. What are we hearing, taking?
Oh, it sounds like water.
Probably the, maybe the heat, the pipe was on or something.
Heat came on.
A little warm in here anyways.
I, I just, I know that, through my history on the board and zoning board, that if somebody is...
Motivated?
Yes. Thank you. Is motivated to build, they're going to use every waiver and variance and whatever to get it done. And I think for me, you asked, what is our, our pleasure with regards to steep slope? I don't have an issue with people having land and using it and, and building a house. My heart breaks though, when I, and it may be, you know, a big deal, so, I guess, but when I see areas that are just being decimated, in my opinion, for developments to go in, when it's like, this is a beautiful area, I just don't get it. How do you see this and then picture a development? I don't, I don't get that. I guess I'm not motivated in that way.
Yeah.
And money doesn't motivate me, so, I would never be able to be bribed, because it'd be like, I just don't care.
It's also advancing human thriving. Building homes, development, advances human thriving.
Well, okay, like I said, I get that people want to be able to put in homes, but it's like, you've got, they've proven, they come before us and prove that they can put in X number of homes, and then they change it all, and like, we want to put it here, and have it go through that, and it's like, why not?
Teresa, you saw that plan that he passed around?
Yeah.
Of the way Nottingham was laid out.
In 17...
You take that...
26.
And you, and you look at those lots and those roads that are straight as an arrow, and tell me how the hell that would ever work? The deal is, it's on a piece of paper. It's flat. The world is flat. Everything looks good. Now, you look at topography and you go, well, you know, I can blast, I can bulldoze, I can do a number of things to get through there, and if it's worth the effort, or motivated, it works.
Yeah, and I, and I, I know that for most of what we see, I mean, even roadways, I was just talking to somebody in Barrington the other day, and like, I can tell you, when I grew up, going Route 4 into Portsmouth, you didn't go the way you went now. That is all new. And there was a lot of blasting and stuff that... And there was a lot of blasting and stuff that changed that, remember? I mean, you, you grew up around here. Soon as you got off of the, the lead traffic circle, you, you kind of wound through to get into Portsmouth. Now it's all straight, it wasn't like that before. So I get that for progress, there needs to be some changes, but I just, I don't know.
And going, even going back to the, the thriving part, there's, the converse that is for health and human, you know, people do much better health-wise as well when they have access to, you know, unfragmented forests and.
wooded areas, recreation, that's why we came here, right? That's why I'm happy to help with Preserve the Turtles, we love those guys, we love all the wildlife around here. But there's ways where we can build and still do that at the same time.
Yeah, I think, similar to like the wetlands protections, you know, you know, I have thirty acres or so, it's, you know, twelve or more is, is wetland, you know, so if I had the money and desire, you know, and the, the motivation, you know, could you fill all that in and build on it? Technology allows you to, sure, but is that the best for the town and for everything else, the environment? That's going to be left here for.
Depends on the impact. What about Route 93? You see the work they did on 93 going from Massachusetts all the way up to Manchester? Do you know how much blasting and cutting they had to do on hills to do that? Why? Because it's for the good of the greater number of people. If it's going to benefit five people, maybe not.
Right, right.
Right?
It's going to benefit a hundred thousand cars a day, so it's. So yeah, I guess, you know, it goes back to, to that, it's.
So where does that leave us though, do we, as a board's board? The steep slope?
I still think it's worth continued movement and to the, to Mrs. Baskin's question about, you know, do we, do you add any kind of relief of either conditional use permit or special exception? So a special exception still puts it to the zoning, but it gives criteria and it's an easier process than a variance.
Yes, much easier.
I guess I'm not in favor of that part of it and the conditional use permit side of it, it's, it's, you know, neither here nor there. It, it's an additional step, but by putting it in, I think it just pushes back to the larger developers that, that the town considers those areas pretty significantly and, and to think twice about it or, you know, be prepared to, you know, show, really show it out, especially if, you know, they're open space plans and it's a yield, you know, if, if you can't show the yield without impacting all these areas, it's a, it might reduce, might not prevent the, the lots from existing, but might reduce the numbers that are going in.
And, and one that we've recently approved, they didn't. I mean, they did show houses in the steep slope area. And I thought that was one of the things I had said at that point too, it's like, you wouldn't really build that, he goes, well, I could.
Yeah, right. Now, there's a big hill there, that one that we were looking at. So can we forward this and put in that language, which would be to say, not subject to variance? And if we don't think that it'll hold up in regulation or in a court of law or something, well, then bring it.
Yeah, well, we, I don't, I, I think it would just be move, if we said that not, not subject to, to variances, Blair, we can't. This, this board can't tie the hands of zoning. Like if we have something that gets added to the zoning ordinance, you can't say, this is not subject, this is not.
But what if it was a zoning rig?
Yeah. No, so the only thing we could do again is, is if it goes into the zoning ordinance, you can add a conditional use permit, which would have to have criteria as to what would meet a conditional use first, not. And if, and if the board, that would keep it at the planning board level, and if it was denied, appeals instead of, would skip the ZBA, would go to Superior Court.
Yeah.
Which, which I guess is seen as a deterrent.
Could you say this is not subject to waiver requests?
That would be if we put it in the subdivision regs and site plan regs, yeah. But I think they were, we were trying to say it'd be, have more teeth to the developers if it was in the zoning.
So what are we deciding?
I don't know, I've said my part. I'm in favor of, of moving, of, again, progressing it forward. I guess the path that would occur if the board kept moving forward with this is, at some point we'd clean up the language enough to be able to put it on, to hold the public hearings within the SB two timeline of, in January, hold the one to two public hearings. And then it would become a vote and then go on to a warrant article and then it'd be up to the town. And if the town votes it yes, it becomes, if the town says no, then goes away.
But what we're agreeing to here is, is that it's on major subdivisions.
I feel that way, I, I feel like that makes, makes sense.
Why don't we start, why don't we start with major subdivisions? We get that W, we'll use that one later, we'll go to the next round.
Bingo. Can we get the W on that?
I was just throwing out that.
No, I appreciate it, I get it.
It tend to go funny sometimes.
It says 25% and totaling more than 2,000 square feet contiguous area.
So I think the thought on that again was trying to come up with a, a number that was saying, well, you just happen to have this one little bump. That's, you know, that part's 25, 25%, but it's the size of that table, you know, to set a criteria of like, to say, okay, like this is when we're going to start measuring it or applying this, it's not these small areas, it's the larger areas of contiguity that.
Right, that really make an impact when you start disturbing it. And, and that's, that's the thing that I, I totally agree with because, like if you just got a little hill the size of that table, it's like, well, you can go around it easily enough, not a problem anyway, or take it out and it doesn't really impact the area.
I'd agree.
So if this were in place today, what would that have done to the Putaka Way Ridge project?
Potentially wouldn't have gone through, it would have had to go through whatever process, either a variance or conditional use permit or to even move, to even have moved forward beyond the, the initial.
Yep. So you could still move forward, you'd have to get the variance.
Correct. It'd be a lot more onerous for the applicant.
And then they would have to meet whatever the, you know, the five criteria, still five criteria. Of variants are, of variants are.
So in the permitted activities section, you said to remove single family residential, what about commercial use?
Yeah, the commercial one was blank, but.
I mean, why are we even talking about permitted activities when?
I think.
This is, this is applying, this is applying to roadways and driveways, do we need that?
Well, I think, I think leaving A, ABC is, is fine because it's just saying again that, you know, it's just making it really clear that those items are, are fine, but D, E and F.
I think if I'm reading this and I don't know zoning that well, and I see ABC but not D, I'm like, wait a second, you know.
And I do want to clarify, and I pulled it, so the way it's written now, it's major subdivisions and site plans. So major subdivisions for more lots, site plans, any commercial potential development that was going into that.
Commercial development. That's not what this young fellow showed us tonight.
The new site plan applications with, um, no, but, so that might be something we, we need to hash out a little bit differently. Is, is how do you look at that, or do we add some clarifying languages to win on those, it would apply? Or it would just apply because, you know, if it, if it has those areas that are over 2,000 square feet. Again, if I'm looking at the commercial, what's technically listed as commercial, commercially zoned, I don't think there's anything on our, our commercial district now that, that's not, that's currently not developed that this would apply to.
Right, because most of that is all at four and fairly flat, at least on that, that side.
Yeah, except for the houses that went in.
Right.
Down at the end of Garland.
Yep.
So I think, I think D, D and F could come out, and then E. Or maybe you're right, Blair, maybe, I guess, maybe you just, you don't need that at all. You're right, it's a, unless you're trying to say like, well, if it's a major subdivision, it's okay to do the, um,
Who's building roads that have an activity on it, right?
Yeah.
So. I feel like denoting your.
I think you're right.
Is, is getting to a point where it's, I don't know.
I think striking that section, unless it, unless there's a reason to have it in there, cleans it up. I, I guess I'm always in favor of, if you can put language in that's clear and easy for everybody, it's great. You know, when you get really long ordinances, even if that's clarifying language and trying, like you're doing metrics and stuff like that, I think it gets convoluted and difficult for the public too.
Permitted activities should be what the underlying zoning already allows. Don't, I don't think you should be jostling, this is an overlay district.
Right.
At least that's the way you've written it, as an overlay district.
Right.
So I, and, and all you're trying to do is restrict where new roads and driveways can go. That's the goal here. And so I think having, having that applicability section, I think becomes confusing because you have an overlay district that has uses.
I agree with Mr. Veal, let's not make a Swiss watch out of it.
Yeah, so I think striking four and then.
Entire section four?
And then going to five, some of this has already been incorporated, I think, so into other, through a prior update. So I think, I think five A is redundant, B, strike that, C, I don't think we need that because it's already covered. And then D, that's something would be additive that we don't have now, so. All primary and accessory buildings subject to some potential base, blah, 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 shall be setback 20 feet from all ridge lines or, or slope tops. So that's, that would be new.
So that would be A, five, four A?
So, when you look at our, that came from the master plan of like, protection of like the ridge lines too. So it's views and, and things like that. So if you have that 20-foot distance between a ridge line, it gives, you know, lets the ridge line stay, plus those are usually more highly erodible. So it's trying to add that protection, so I think that would be a discussion point.
I thought that was on a house. The ridge line of the house.
Isn't that what he's talking about?
No, 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 ridge, like if you actually are developing near a ridge line, you know.
Oh, a hill.
Like a hill or, or mountain, yeah.
A rock on rock.
And then anything else in here?
Those two were, those two phrases are not identified, not, not defined.
F, F greater earth moving on all sloping lands, 25% or greater. So that, this would be really restrictive. So if you added this somewhere in the way I read it, again, if you have a 25% slope, like when you're putting in a driveway or, so we're, or a road, and you're looking mostly, again, to get to that eight or 10% grade or 6% grade, you know, they're, they're doing 20, 30, 40-foot cuts. Because then you have to build it back up and then get the base and everything else. So six feet. I don't even know how you would ever just do a six-foot cut to, in one of those areas to get, to get to any kind of grade. That was appropriate. So I don't know with some of the other changes we've made, if, if, if we want to keep these in, move them somewhere else in here, or it would be pulled out.
So, so far you said remove A, B and C. Keep D. E is, I mean, for zoning ordinance, it's really not necessary because it's not prescribed enough.
I know, it's got, it's got like a, a best practice kind of statement.
Yeah, yeah. I guess we can, I guess we keep it in there. But why would you have that if you, if you're telling people you cannot? If this applies to 25% or greater, then you can't do this anyway.
Right.
So why have that?
Right, that's what I'm saying. No, no, that's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to figure out and hash out is, is like, do you put that somewhere else if it's a, if it's an additional restriction above and beyond, that in case it does go for a variance of being able to address it? It's like, well, you need a variance from this too because, so no, I think, I think probably for now, I think without, you would take that out.
Take F out?
I mean, unless you combine it with E and said, but at no point shall it exceed six feet as, you know, something like that.
Can you maybe think of like that language and how to reword that? Just for the, the next time we talk about it, we can, we can, uh, go through that. Unfinished slopes of all cuts and fills shall exceed three to one. So we do talk about that in the subdivision regs and site plan regs. Putting it here, I guess is accomplishing that thing we're saying, right, it's not, it's not waivable within that other part. But if they got a variance, if someone's getting a variance, you know, they, they would potentially have to get a waiver, ask for two to one of us, a variance, you know, for the, for the, just the overall disturbance. So I don't know if you need that.
This is regardless of whether it's 5% or 25%, this is saying anything three to one cannot, or it cannot exceed three to one.
In this district, only in the overlay district, only in that 25% or slope, yeah. So it's kind of going back to the same.
That's finished.
The finished slope, yeah, finished grade.
So what is this, what am I not seeing here?
So I just don't know if it's, if it, if it makes sense to have it in this section if you're applying those standards and they're going to get a variance, like why would you say this? Is that going to add ambiguity if someone's like, well, you say we can't do it, but then you say we, we can by having slopes?
Well.
I, I think taking that out.
What you're saying is that if someone's going to put a road on a 25, a 27% because they got a variance, okay, fine, your side slopes can't have to be at least three to one, they can't be two to one. There is two different standards there that you're creating a regulation for. So if I'm gonna, I mean, you know, a recent applicant would have needed two variances because he got a waiver.
Right.
So he would have needed two variances. One for going over 25% and then one for going to two to one slope. So, I mean, you are, in a way, protecting yourself by saying, all right, we still got this.
And I guess, if it was written this way, if someone were to go for a variance, if someone were to go for a variance, would they be required to say like, okay, you know, here's what we're proposing, here's the amount of impact, you know, we're proposing two to one slopes, so it's this amount of impact. Is that looked at, or if it said, you know, but the zoning says, you know, you can't, you have to have three to one slopes? Is that more like, part of like a measurement criteria of like, that's taken into account when they're asking for the variance? You know, like the degree of, of, I guess, like how much of variance they need. So it's like, well, we're, we're impacting this amount. It's like, no, you're impacting, you know, 100,000 square feet, not 60,000 square feet because you need three to one slopes.
Yeah, well, we would actually
That degree of difference.
Go out and look to see what they're looking to do.
Yeah.
And then have them show us the, the area. Anyway, it's like, okay, so if you're doing this road and then you need these slopes, where now does that end? So we would actually look at that and go, yeah, no, you're, you're going this.
Your neighbor's driveway, what are you doing?
The request is for relief from whatever the specific language is in your zone.
Yeah.
So if it says 25%, whether they're getting, whether they're asking for 26% or 52%, they're asking for something that is not, that is, that exceeds the regulation, which is 25%. They can put conditions on it saying, okay, you can exceed the 25%, but you can't exceed 30%. It could, I, as far as I understand it, you, you can put a condition onto a variance.
Yeah, and you're right, and I, you look at the language under Farmington's steep slopes and look at the language they're using. Under no circumstance shall the road bed of a driveway or access road exceed 20%. Any site disturbance of slopes exceeding 15% shall be minimized. No site disturbance shall be allowed on slopes exceeding 25%. So that's, that's not gray at all.
Yeah.
It seems to me that's not, when you, you put it like that, it's not subject to a variance.
It still would be though, even if they say that, like.
Still would be?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can always get a variance, it's just, I'm trying to say, like, we're really trying to hold the line here.
But what I was saying is, I guess what I was trying to say was like, though, if they have to come in when they're asked for the variance, that they're just. If they have to come in, when they're asked for the variance, if they're just asked for the variance for the section. Or is it measured like, okay, well, what are you proposing, you know, you're proposing, so we say no disturbance within this area over two thousand square feet. You know, while, while we're, we're disturbing five thousand square feet, like that's going to probably be looked a lot different at, you know, while we're disturbing a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. I'm, I'm just going with like crazy numbers. That's probably going to have a difference, like a higher standard that they have to approve.
No, what.
Than the two thousand or the three thousand.
No, what happens is if they go, come to us for a variance. The variance specifically states relief from, and then whatever.
Requirement.
Requirement it is to build a house, to put a road through or whatever it is. And that is specifically what we look at. We look at, we go, okay, there, and I caution them all the time, because sometimes they do all of these little rabbit things. Especially depending on what anybody in the audience, if you want, has to say. If any, anybody comes in and wants to speak against it or whatever, they can send people going sh, sh, sh over and it's like, no, no, no. We are specifically looking at relief from the variance, in this case, for steep slopes. Greater than twenty-five percent to put in a road for a subdivision, period. So that's, that's the only way it would be looked at.
Okay, so it's not looking at the, the amount or the scale of, of the request in a way?
No, it, it.
Just the request.
If, if they said, you know, that would be disturbing twenty-five feet or whatever, that could be stated, if that's stated, then it is. But most of the time, it's just relief from a specific part of the variance and for whatever their project is.
Okay.
And you can still say no, right?
A yes or a no, I mean, approval or not is, is always the option, yes. They have to show, meet the five criteria, and again, that really depends on how people look at. Whether or not they are, you know, in any way burdened by that variance.
So I guess if we do keep the finished slopes piece in here, the only other question, is there any detriment to that being? I'm trying to remember, I feel like there was language from either fishing game or, you know, things like that, where a specific slope was either. Was preferred to keep things from going up it, you know, towards the roadway, so you could kind of guide things to crossings or whatever.
Yeah, no, a two to one slope is the recommended for that guidance document that came out last November. I do believe they recommend two to one slopes with rip rap to break the riparian continuity. For culverts.
That's the state.
It's guidance from fishing game.
Guidance from the state.
Yeah, yes.
So it's probably something to go through like the AOT process too, but. So that'd be the only kind of question there is, you know, is there a negative side of that of saying that not to exceed three to one? Cause most of these areas are probably going to have various habitat, or.
To, to, I mean, the point you're doing is the state will ask.
Right.
To go to a two to one is just, you're really kind of. Cause you guys, this county has a lot of low lying wet areas, and you start getting soils running into there and, and, you know.
They're not what, very long?
Yeah. Flooding is going to happen, it's what will eventually happen. You're not going to be this, this quiet little pamphlet forever, it's going to be tough. It's going to happen. So, you know, we gotta think about the future generations and them in the situation.
So I guess maybe.
I think for now, it's a good thing to keep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think three to one is, it makes sense, you know, especially for reason wise, if there's a culvert being put in. The slope of the, you know, surrounding road grade is going to be one of the less impactful things. You know, if it means the culvert not going in at all or something like that.
So I guess the, the, where it says unless the applicant, I don't like the rest of that sentence. I would, the only thing I would potentially change that to is unless the applicant is required to. To have a lesser slope or a different slope due to state, state or federal permits. Cause that, that's.
I think that would be obvious, I don't think it needs to be stated.
Okay.
Yeah, I delete the rest of that.
Yeah.
The adequately word at the end bugged me.
Which, which one are you on?
F, after the three to one slope.
Oh, F, we're back to F, okay.
Yeah, unless the applicant demonstrated a certification and license professional engineer, that steeper slopes can be stabilized and maintained adequately.
No, just finished slopes of all cuts and fills shall not exceed three to one, and stop it there. Look at that, we trimmed that down.
Hmm, sure.
So again, there's still going to be more discussion, and there's still time to tweak it, add to it, try to think about how it would apply. You know, I wouldn't think about any cases that are still before us, but anything that's already been gone through, you know, you can try to think of how stuff like this would have applied. You know, I think having a, or going out and looking at things that were developed already that, you know. And see how they actually look, so I always have our time visualizing, like, like Mr. Severn said, it was, you know, two dimensional paper, a lot of lines on it. You could walk it, you know, you do a site walk, it's all forested at that time or whatever, and then it's hard to picture what that is going to look like.
Houses have gone up on Route Four that are so far up the hill, you need a sherpa guide to get up to the front porch. I mean, this thing is, I looked at some of those and went, man, who did that? So this is what we're talking about.
They got a variance for it.
Yeah, they got a variance.
And part of that was the state, because it's, you know, the access is state controlled too. For that, cause I wouldn't want to come down those driveways onto Route Four in the winter.
You want a lot more negative slope.
I, I don't want to keep everybody here too late tonight, it's been, I'm sure everybody's had long weeks. Does anybody want to get into ADUs a little bit more?
No.
Not tonight.
Let's check, let's check with Chris.
The setbacks pre-existing non-conforming lots, did you guys, I, I didn't watch the, the meeting from the last time, did you?
We didn't get into any of this.
So I think that one was, the way we talked about it in the past was, we were just trying to ease something on the pre-existing non-conforming. It wasn't trying to recreate the wheel, it was just saying, we see this on these, zoning is seeing these, it's applying, we can make that easier for everybody. So I think that one is, seems like a, an easier one. Alright.
What are, what are, what are you talking about?
Pre-existing non-conforming.
It's not in here tonight, I don't think, but we just had on the agenda, uh, the, to keep it, to make sure, to try to keep, make sure we don't lose the, the. Keeps in continuity, it's my word tonight. The focus on these, we kept trying to keep them on the agenda. Alright, public comment, we always reserve time of night for people to come in and talk to us about planning board and zoning things if possible, does not case specific application. Nobody's here, so we'll move on. We have once at a minute from nine twenty-five. If anybody wants to go over those.
To approve.
Two corrections.
I.
Line seventy-two, I think it should say, Mr. McKinnon stated they would add the conservation deed restriction to the plans, not that. And then line seventy-five, I believe the word should be precedent, not precedence.
Line which one?
Line seventy-five, that first word should be precedent with a T, not precedence with a C. And that was the only.
I was going to vote for that one too.
That was the only stuff that I.
Any further edits? If not, a motion to approve as amended would be in order?
Second.
I need to make the motion.
We're going to make a motion.
I said I'd be in order, I try not to make a motion.
Did you move it?
Sure.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Severn and a second by Mr. Stevens to approve the minutes of nine twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four as amended. Any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries five zero. Uh, select boards, upward member updates, this would be quick.
Yeah, cause he's not here.
The first meeting in November.
Our only meeting in November.
Huh?
Only have one.
Only one?
Mm-hmm.
Currently.
Cause of the holiday.
Oh, well, the first one, which I believe is like the twelfth or thirteenth or something like that. I probably will not be here, I'll be coming back from Arizona, so.
Let's cancel the whole thing.
It's November nineteenth, right?
Well, if you can't make it, just send us another email, it's, it is November thirteenth is the.
Oh, that's the zoning board, never mind, planning board, November thirteenth.
Too many boards.
I think that's the day we come back, so I probably won't.
You have time to change your flight earlier if you want. I appreciate that, that's, that's helpful, thank you.
The other thing I, I can, I guess I kind of want to clarify, and, and this is in regards to the detached ADUs. I just see them as becoming residences without the characteristics. That typically go with a residence, with a dwelling, and I, I did not say that the other night, so I just wanted to.
Do you see that as a negative, they become residents? Of course someone's going to live in it, right?
I don't see it as becoming negatively as a residence, as long as it's the same size. My guess is, at some point in time, they will grow.
The regulation says seven hundred and fifty square feet.
I hear you.
It can't go beyond that, right?
It can, if somebody.
It used to say four hundred.
You could get a variance, or you could create a warrant article or something to change it to something different.
Or the state, or the state can hand it down, that's what happened before, I think it was four hundred before, and then.
And then all of a sudden, we've allowed two residences on the same lot. Not saying that's a problem, but that sounds like a nightmare and a half, that sounds like a subdivision, just, it, it just, to me. We have accessory units, and I think that's appropriate. Want to add on?
We have attached accessory units, right? We're talking about detaching them, and you picture one going way back on the back forty somewhere, someone's going to run a driveway to it. And three people are going to live there.
I don't really care where it goes, next to the house, wherever.
Yeah.
But it skirts.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
Regulations that would have to go in order to make sure that that doesn't happen, to me, seems large, large project.
So are you leaning no on detached ADUs?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I, I know a lot of people that want to utilize that. And, and I think they would be nice looking and, you know, the whole nine yards. But there seems like a lot of stuff that has to go with that, that presently is not quote unquote required.
I just want families to be able to take advantage of the land that they own.
And, and I understand that.
Yeah.
But, but if that's the case, then we don't have zoning. You don't need zoning, if that's the attitude, you don't need zoning.
Well, I don't understand.
Well, so, but I mean, I guess. Yeah, there's multifamily and we allow that, but it has more stringent requirements, so it's, it's changing the rule a bit of, of saying. So I think, if I'm interpreting correctly, you know, there's that balance of, how do you continue to, to keep what's supposed to be like the, the look of the town? And the feel of town, everything else, avoid it becoming, you know, a loophole for multifamily. You know, so I think that's the balance of, of, of it, you know, and, and do you do it, but add some additional language in to try to address those points? You know, it's the same shared septic system or something like that, I think that was one of the discussion points before, it's like, well, if you're, you know, if you can do this. And, you know, utilize the existing septic system, that's one thing, but if you're having to put in a separate well, separate septic system for the structure. That is a, in my opinion.
Subdivision.
That's a, that's a multifamily versus, you know, detached ADU.
And I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with multifamily, it, it's just that the stuff that goes with all of that. To me, makes sense, this ADU thing is, is just been driven by the state, so they could get more housing units.
Yeah, I think we can put in language to met, to help modify that though, you know, because, I mean, you could even say, but you have to share the address. I don't want three forty-eight A and three forty-eight B, it's all going to be one address, so that way you're not going multifamilies here.
As I say, nine one one will come through and change it.
I think the provision that somebody has to live there that owns it is what keeps them from being multifamily.
And I'm a fan of, again, I'm a fan of that, and then also a permit, just because I think that lets the town understand how many are here. It allows a potential avenue for the town, you know, again, I've never seen the town come down heavy handed on stuff. I think our building inspector or code enforcement has generally been very, you know, lenient, not lenient, but worked, tried to work with people. But it gives them an avenue to start that discussion, like say, well, you're not in compliance with the permit. You know, and then they see like life safety issues or some other stuff or, or whatever, it, it at least gives the town something to start a process if they needed to. And again, lets them understand how many are here and, and everything else, so, you know, for planning purposes in the future.
How many detached ADUs currently exist, do you know?
We don't.
Do we have an idea, or how many?
We don't know.
None.
No, there's, there's some that, there's some that have had variances granted to allow them, and then there may be others that are existing that. Are existing out of compliance and just have not been known or enforced. So that's, that's one of those things, it's hard to not, to know without a way to check the numbers, that's why.
That can't be many, I mean, you're talking about putting the whole house without anybody noticing.
No, 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 no. Attached, attached presently means that there's a wall betw- between the two buildings. And there are many in how, in town that have that.
But there could be others that are above garages or in barns that people aren't aware of.
Fence with lattice work, that's attached.
But not ours, but that doesn't satisfy ours, you have to have an interior door.
Well, that's new.
Yeah, that was, that was because of that, for someone.
Interior door thing I like.
Built a three hundred foot long pergola that attaches to the house.
Yep, yep, all that. And Blair, I like the phrase that the, it has to be owner occupied, because I see that as pretty much a good thing. Because if you, if you're doing it for your kids and your kids have kids that are in the small one, and they need to move to the, the larger. They can swap, all of that's fine, it's just after those people move. I, I just, I don't have a feel for what that becomes.
It becomes rentals, and we're not bad people, I promise you.
No, I, I get.
There are homeowners.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Plenty of neighbors that I don't like that own their home, and they're the worst, cause you'll never get rid of them. Renters move on. You know, the other thing to remember is that you, you know. A town needs to have a certain number of units, because you can't just stay stagnant. You're, you're going to be artificially inflating the price of your homes, and eventually it's not, people are not going to move in. People are not going to buy the houses that are here, cause it's not going to meet their needs and their, and their income. And the ADUs allow you to add units without infrastructure, without building new roads, without having sprawl. You're building it where infrastructure already exists. So I think if anything, you know, when you've talked about how it impacts your taxes and stuff. Allowing new units without having to have the infrastructure that you'll eventually have to maintain, or, you know, provide emergency services for. It's, it's, it's certainly a reduced cost to the town, but you get the units anyways.
But that can be attached.
Well, as funny as, the guy we'll meet in a minute, you know, a student here who's watching my dog. He's in the process of re-renewing his wife's family home to make it a little bigger for their family. But his mother, who's a widow now, is going to live on site in an ADU, and the intention was originally put attached. You know, she has some problems that he's like, hmm, you know what, maybe. We love her, but maybe he would just slide her over here a little bit, you know.
I would do.
Alright.
Appreciate the comments.
Well, I say it every week, can we land this plane now?
Yeah, soon, yeah.
Nothing.
I don't have anything that I could think of, not far ahead.
Except that I may not be here at the next meeting, just, I mentioned that to you earlier, but.
I do plan on being here.
The agenda for the next meeting, if we have a continued York one, and then, didn't we have something?
We have two continued, the twelve month LLC, that was tonight, the York.
Mill Pond going on?
Are both continued, yeah, Mill Pond, those two continued to that night.
Oh, and then this, the two lot one?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that it, Olivia, you think? So, it could be another night to try to do a little something.
Yeah, and then I think that would be one too, if we can move forward with it, that'd be a good night to potentially add in the subdivision, subdivision, site plan regulation. Changes if we have them.
I'm not comfortable doing zoning stuff without Teresa here.
Y'all can do just fine with us.
Well, again, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be final anyway, it would be, if, if anything was to move forward, there would be, you know.
I understand.
The, yeah, so. The, yeah, so, Mr. Baske wouldn't have an option.
I mean, I can try, I can try to do a little preparation. I've burned a lot of hours getting ready for the joint meeting and a lot of the other stuff, so I'm kind of, I'm a little thin right now for you guys.
Yeah.
Um, but what could I try to prepare for the next meeting?
I'll, I'll go through, I'm going to find, I know, because I know you consolidated it already at one point, I need to go back through and find the email you'd sent to us with the subdivision, site plan reg, things that like here were the things that we've kind of bulleted out to like housekeeping, you know, appendix, appendix updates of like map and lot numbers, whatever, that stuff, uh, I think, and then any additional potential new language or changes that we identify in between, but that's going to be up to individual members to come forward with that. So I would say nothing really, except for.
I'll make the edits to the discussion we had tonight.
Yeah. Which I think that should be hopefully pretty easy.
Put that on something and get that through.
Yep. Yep.
Perhaps ADUs, but then we can put a pin in that for a little while. Um, but the other ones, um, I think there are some, some, some good small zoning amendment changes like this non-conformant thing and perhaps the lot.
And if we get nothing new.
Yes.
As I say.
Yes.
That was bubbling up.
Yes.
Yeah, that is one we need to change, move or add verbiage into the, the language area. So, but after that, you know, I guess we can check, you and I can check in in between. So in, in the past, there's nights, there's some, I'll tell Mr. Rainey just to say, don't come in, you know, it's, save the hours for another thing that, you know, if there are continued cases, we've already had pretty good discussion on them. Unless there's something new that comes up, sometimes I'll just take the decision and say, you know, save those hours. It's more beneficial to everybody to put them here.
Yeah.
So, well, you and I can check in that week and figure that out if that works for you.
Yeah.
All right.
Good progress on steep slopes today.
All right, good job, everybody. All right, uh, I'm going to adjourn, it is 9:30. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We do have a set of plans to sign before you leave, please.
Can I ask a good question? Maybe you know.
Sure.
What's a 4K?
It's a 4,000 square foot area in.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm going to unadjourn for one second. So the town's going to be potentially posting for someone that will do the minutes for the planning board and the zoning board, the amount of hours that the position is taking for Alana with what we have before us is, you know, she, she kind of re-inherited minutes. We had that outsourced for a while, um, but we're trying to do that again. So if anybody knows anybody that would like to just transcribe minutes for the planning board and ZBA, please let me and myself know or the town administrator, Ellen.
It's not a job of the secretary.
It would be, it would be great. We can try, we can add it. So, all right, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.